Well, just by way of history, this committee, I guess, hasn't convened in quite some time. And I just went through memory lane, going through the file. And back in, I think, 98, we started working on this. And this is the original jail analysis with a broken computer on there. I know Judge Bulis was here when we had, when he first took office. We had a backlog of going back, what, six years of waiting to serve jail bed days. We went through that, we got through it. They, and then I think it was 2000, the sheriff was about to start emergency releasing again. And we asked him not to do that. And asked him to give us an opportunity to come up with a mechanism that would allow a formula to take care of who goes in jail and who goes out of jail. And in lieu of emergency release. So in order to keep the jail population at a constant and be able to live within the jail bed days, we devised a formula and it took quite, quite a lot of work. After we came up with suggestions, we categorized each, I guess, segment of the population and what an average daily population would look like. We looked at who sent them there, which courts, and then devised a mechanism to allot a certain amount of beds based on usage, case flow, caseload to each court. We presented that to the judges and after considerable debate, and they agreed to live by it and abide by it. Part of that was instituting a bond schedule that the sheriff could look at and be able to bond somebody out based on, I think, felony fours and fives or OR. Pre-trial release was a very integral part of the whole process. And it worked very, very well. We took it to the next level where we incorporated that into CEGIS. And then a computer program took over running that. There's, there are people designated in each office, the Court of Common Police, Clerk's Office, pre-trial release. There are people in our office here at the Canton Municipal Court that monitor the jail population daily. They make recommendations only if there's a problem. I think there's 162 beds that are Canton, or Municipal Court beds. Each Municipal Court judge has an allotted number. We never touch those beds unless they go over as a group. Common Police Court has never had an issue. Anyone that the Common Police Court puts in, they have no limits at all. Felons are high priority and, but from time to time, it may become necessary for pre-trial release to go to a judge and ask them, "Our population is getting close to maximum. Would you consider this or this?" And there's a number of factors that they look at when they make those recommendations. So I guess that's a, that's a brief history in looking through the file because it was, it was a very arduous process. And it worked so well. When the sheriff was telling members of his association how it worked, how we were able to do it, we were, we received calls from all over the state asking us, "How can you do this? How does this work?" Our association, when I was at the Common Police level, same, same thing. People were asking us to come and visit them and ask how we do it. And we presented it to a number of different courts. We had several come here and look at it. And quite frankly, none of them were able to accomplish it because they don't have the level of, of cooperation that we have here. It takes the court, they have to be willing to accept it. And it was a sales pitch that we gave the court at first, like I said, and it was a lot of debate as to whether or not it would work. Well, I can tell you that it worked. It worked so well that it's been the envy of virtually every jurisdiction with a jail problem. They call here and ask how we're able to do it. And it works because we don't politicize the process. It is something that, you know, we asked the citizens of Starr County for a sales tax to increase jail beds. And what I've found from talking to these people, it doesn't matter the size of their jail. I mean, it will fill up. If you send people there blindly, it's going to, it's, it's going to fill up. The sheriff's office, we determined from looking at this, has about, they control about 5% of their population. One category, it's who is sentenced and who gets to get out. And who they're going to put on a bus and send to an institution. The rest of it requires a lot of case-by-case analysis and it, it works very, very well. So that, that's a little brief history. This is, this is the computer program here of how it runs. And we can show you that and we can get into as much in-depth of how it works as you want. And the reason that this committee hasn't convened in such a large amount of time is because there's never been a problem. Whenever the jail beds had been reduced, and it's happened, the sales tax came off, we had to reduce those numbers. We didn't open the jail like it happened in the 90s and that we're going to let all these prisoners out. We adjusted the numbers and they, they took care of themselves. So each judge in the Municipal Court level, they've done a marvelous job. I mean, the amount of work that's put in by the, by the judges that go above and beyond what they are statutorily allowed to do or should be doing is really immense. So with that, I'm going to open it up. But that is the history.
I'd just like to say, just monitoring the jail bed daily, I mean, you can see, you've seen a lot of different fluctuations through. But if anybody's wondering, you know, I went back and tried to say, "Well, why are we, why are we usually hovering around 450 beds?" And there's a multitude of things that have gone into play. One of the biggest reasons was the last time we had to do, have release and ask judges, actually, release prisoners was last year when we had a very large sweep over the weekend when we arrested a lot of prisoners. And the reason being was, at that point, we did that because we were only at 400 beds. Because we didn't open the jail back up to full capacity until April and July. So that was the last time we had an issue and since then we have opened up. Some other things that have played into the fact that our numbers have seemed to be reduced is the amount of felony complaints that have been filed has decreased over the last year. I talked to Karen a couple of weeks ago and Karen, you said you're down about 200 in some interviews compared to what you were last year?
When Chris is here, I just go over it and it's more like 75 to 100.
Okay.
I mean, the numbers go a little off.
Okay. But so 75 to 100 and less felonies than actually complaints that have been filed. Felons are the ones that tend to stay in more than being missing. A couple of other reasons too is the Supreme Court changed, we had a new bench guard last year. I know the Municipal Court checked, a lot of them canceled some old warrants based on the criteria from the State Supreme Court, which means we're, we're picking up less people on the warrants because we have less warrants going through. The other thing is, here in the Canton Municipal Court, we kind of changed the way that we did collection, which kind of fluctuated, changed the way that we did warrants, which started to cut down on multiple warrants. So it's a multitude of everything. You have more jail beds open, less felony arrests, less warrants. So really, it's just a multitude. We check it pretty much, I mean, every single day. And you guys, you can see, you can see who's over and who's not. The overage really doesn't come into a concern to us because we're nowhere near maximum capacity.
So that means if some of the specific judges over on their side of beds, it doesn't matter?
No. It doesn't matter. No. If a judge was, let's say, we have, we have a judge that goes over 15, 20 beds, they're more well than their capacity, there's no reason for us to fall into dissection because that's why I've never been able to.
Let me just give you the perspective of the judges ahead. And I'll give you what is my personal perspective and what we just had judges meeting this morning and I've had calls from judges all over the county. I mean, ultimately, it's the commissioner's decision. I don't think anybody's disputing your formula reprocess is top-notch. I mean, there's no question about it. I think, you know, part of the judges described the way this took place, that it wasn't presented at the board meeting and then it went straight to the commissioners. And probably if we were to do this again, we ought to talk about it first. I can tell you, I've been under the impression that we need to let people out. I mean, when pre-trial comes to me, it says we let this person out, and I think all the judges feel that way, that we've been letting people out because we've been under the impression that the jail beds are at the level and that officers were being trained so you could get to full capacity. I don't know how long it's been full capacity. I think the day we start selling beds, to Summit County, it creates several problems. Number one, I think it dooms passing the sales tax in the future. And for the county, for the judges, that probably is 15% of our budget is that tax. I don't know if it affects the Canton Municipal budget, but it affects our budget considerably and that has the Common Police Court judges quite concerned. I don't know if we've discussed the problems liability-wise, if we have Summit County prisoner and he does something to Starr County Sheriff or another inmate in there, I think that's something that we need to talk about. I don't know if the municipal judges have talked about increasing the number of beds that they get each month. I know a couple of municipal judges have said that they could fill that jail up in one day if they had more beds. I think the judges also feel that, you know, with community control sanctions, we're limited as to who you can send to prison anymore. And if we know there's more beds, we'll start sending them to the county jail as part of the sentencing. So no one's disputing the formula or anything or what you're doing, it's top-notch. I just think that the Common Police judges and the municipal judges that have talked to me feel a little bit blindsided by the whole process and just don't feel comfortable with it.
Well, I guess in response to that, I don't think that anyone ever, I mean, the court has the ultimate say on who is in and who is out. And if a court, regardless of Municipal Court, Common Police Court, does not sign a release for one, there's a mechanism that, that criteria put in place. If those people fit that criteria, the pre-trial release will come to you and say, "This matches the criteria." If we didn't do that, the jail would automatically fill up. So if, when they come to you, it's because they have an individual that fits the criteria that is, and I'm assuming we're talking about pre-trial cases, correct?
I'm talking about all.
Okay. Well, if, if there's a case that, that person fits for, and is eligible for release and, and will show up to their court appearances, they present that to you for release. If you're not comfortable releasing anyone, that just doesn't happen. I don't think there's ever been an instance where the judge has said no and that person has gotten out.
But don't you think we ought to, if we're considering this idea, have a meeting with all the judges, Democrat, Republican, everybody? Because I'm not the only person that I know has independent judges. We're not partisan. Because I, I think that here, I'm coming as a spokesperson, just as the president, and the phone calls to me haven't been as amicable as we're all here today. So I mean, if you're thinking about doing this, I think that you need to really set up a meeting and independent meeting.
Could you go back to the beginning of this?
Yes.
This whole meeting really was initiated, again, because of the sheriff, you know, proper, the idea of potentially, you know, selling jail beds to someone or to somebody else because he had excess capacity.
Right.
As we look at the numbers, one of the things that we discussed at our meeting was, let's look at the numbers and let's do some other things. And we put it on the back burner so we could take the corrections planning board and let everybody discuss it. And I think we need to have everybody discussing it in that large group in this. But Sheriff, why don't you tell us how the whole idea started?
First of all, we said, you know, publicly, our release and this meeting, thank the courts and the judges, they've done a great job. We've had a great relationship on keeping the balance if you will leave jail. When I, when I say keep the balance, I'm referring more to when I first got here, I think we were at 300 or 350 beds. So there was a process to get back up to the 501 beds. And the courts have been very amicable in helping the sheriff's office do that. And so I understand the concern. And with that, Judge, I want to go back to something you said you weren't aware. I'm sorry that you weren't aware, every unique corrections meeting, I had to report out how we do one of the jail beds. And in July of last year, we reported that we were going to build up to 501. So we didn't articulate that well enough. If it would happen through the CEGIS program, then we need to probably fix that. But we did let everybody know that we do up to 501.
But there was never any indication that we were going to go into a program in Summit County?
No. And we didn't even, not, not at that time, we didn't even know that. Here, let me talk about how that happened. Summit County laid off, I don't know, we've, we've been through this here in Starr County. They laid off some of their deputies. They have been, they reached out to not just us, a number of counties and said, "We would like you to put together a contract. What would cost us if we would need to use some of your beds?" And that's how this started. I doubt they would ever use any of our beds regardless, because they can buy beds a lot cheaper than they can buy from us, seriously, and other counties. Because there's a formula that's used, you have to calculate what, what the actual cost is, if it's closer to 10, to the bed cost. And we're probably higher than some of the other counties, which is fine. But they asked for a contract. I'm not in a position to legally provide a contract. I had to go to the commissioners. So basically, I don't know that we ever expected to sell any beds if there were beds available, but we were given them a quote if they would need to use beds. And only if those beds would be available. So in other words, we would take care of our business plan here first and make sure the beds were available to our courts first. And then if there was a need, we would be able to do, provide beds. So that was the, that was the focus of this. And quite frankly, we have been, we're at 440, but then our number, we're a little bit higher than that now, 460, 470, which is good, using beds. But how this all started. This is not the first time. We've had, the commissioners have contracts. Most of the time, there are just an understanding between different counties, they trade inmates off. Maybe we have somebody here that can't be in the population for whatever reason, there's a conflict with another inmate. We'll trade with other counties inmate for inmate so that we prevent a problem in the jail. And there are the times where ourselves is in trouble. You know, in our case, when we were down in jail beds, we housed people in other jails as well. So that concept is not all that foreign to the business of putting people in jail.
But we've never sold the beds to people.
We have.
But we have, we did that.
2012, I think is the last time we had a contract. I think that's what expired. But, you know, we went into a decline and we probably couldn't sell beds. But yes, we have that business sale. We sold beds to marshals in the past. It's a bit routine in the business. However, we haven't used a lot because of our economic downfall here.
But then it goes into the general fund?
Yes.
Sort of like the question for discussion, at least from the commissioner's perspective, it's, you know, to throw the idea out on the table. See whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, if everybody's input on it. So obviously, we commissioners, who put on the sales tax and, you know, I'm the one that probably had more handles than anyone. We don't want to do anything that would jeopardize the public's confidence. And the sales tax, I understand your concern. On the other hand, when I look at numbers, for example, today, so that's a good meeting for everybody to understand that there is at least 10% excess capacity out of the day. The question is, do we have that kind of excess capacity? If we sell that on a day-to-day basis and actually return money back to the general fund without contingent upon the judges' ability to use the beds? On the other hand, if the judges nowadays see that there's 150 beds available a day that you weren't aware of, they can reexamine how you sentenced. Because ideally, our preference would be that the 501 beds are used fully. The judges, and we sentence them, right? Everybody in the municipal and the Common Police Court.
That's a fine point. That's why it may not be a bad idea to have meetings of all the judges, because people are frustrated that people get let out and while they're out, they commit other crimes. And again, a lot, I think the judges, this morning, in the meeting, have been under the impression that, hey, we need to get people out. So, you know, if you sit and have all the judges together, they may use more beds in the Municipal Court level. I don't know if they had, I think, 25 before, but it may be worse sitting and listening to all the judges concerning this before you go to the committee.
This, this whole process came about because we were in Summit County's shoes. We were spending 1.3 million a year at the time and it would have kept increasing, sending our prisoners to counties that we could afford to house them. So we looked internally and developed this, this process. And, I mean, and it's not just, and once it was developed, it became a management tool for us. We were able to look at those categories and see which categories filled up. And we looked back and looked to see how we can reduce those. So we created internal processes simply by categorizing them. And that's what's being brought to you each time when they say, "Let's let this person out. This person would..." Now, it's not a, it's not a, where the jail is full, let's let this person out. It's, it's a process that we use in order to keep the jail flowing. It's, it's, it's like a hotel with the, the people have a reservation, they get there, but if they overstay, they're welcome. I mean, if they, if they, if there's something that we can implement that moves things, we do that. So I think, I look at this as just another tool. For whatever reason, we've been trying to determine, why are they empty? And we looked and the felonies are down about...
A lot of this, what I'm saying is, the judges have been under the impression that we need to let people out. That's why I'm saying, you ought to sit down with the judges. If they know there's more beds, I think they're going to start using them. And that was certainly my impression this morning at the judges' meeting. It's been my impression, and Judge Bulis is here, from, you know, like, here the municipal judges, but I guess that's the point I'm trying to make here. I'll use more beds now, to be very honest with you, you know?
I mean, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that it's, it's not that we're like trying to let people out. We have, they're, they're coming to you, this is the criteria, this person fits the criteria. Now, if you couple that with, we're down 60 felonies in the last six months or whatever the numbers came down to, you put those two together, naturally, the jail beds are going to be below. Will that happen six months from now? I can't say that. I don't know that. I can't predict that crime will, will, the felonies and the domestic violences that apply will continue to be down. That may not hold true six months from now. But what I can tell you is every time a judge puts somebody in the jail, they stay there and you don't want them out, they get out when you say they get out. That hasn't changed. But if, if the sheriff's office has the ability, if, if the criteria that is used and the crime continues to remain down and we have 20 extra beds on a constant basis and the sheriff can rent those 20 beds to another entity, whether it's Summit County or Cuyahoga County or the federal marshals or whoever it is, if there are empty beds, simply based on good management, should he or should he not have the ability to, I guess, generate revenue for the county with those empty beds? With the understanding that anytime you or any other court puts someone in that jail bed, that they stay there until you say they get out? You have that assurance, I'm assuming, Sheriff, correct?
Absolutely.
Now, let me ask you, this trend of the beds being lower than capacity, what's the average annual jail bed capacity? If we look at this at a longer span, just recent, you know, three, four, five, six months, what's the annual average capacity? I think that gives us a better idea of what we're looking at. Like you just said, what's happening six months from now? Maybe this is a dip that, okay, we're going to react to our jail beds and, I mean, perhaps not.
We were trying to determine that, but some of the things that Cody mentioned have changed. I mean, the R warrant process here in the Canton Municipal Court has really changed. Where some cases, they were issuing up to five, six warrants on a case, that doesn't happen anymore simply because of a change of procedure. Again, because we've, we've been able to look internally and change things based on what we know is happening. So I don't know that the...
It's not helping.
Exactly.
And my other thing, it's hard to do that with, is the fact that the beds have been open. I mean, I can look back and usually, we're close to the capacity for the last couple of years because we have the usual amount of jail beds. I mean, we get capacity right now, which is a good thing.
Can you take a daily shot of that though and then average it? And just even get a ballpark number?
Yes, yes, we do do that. We definitely do that.
In response to Mike's question.
Yes. Absolutely. Absolutely. A lot of this is, is perception also. What do you mean, the sheriff said the commissioner's office trying to shell jail bed days? When so-and-so came to me the other day and says, "Can you let us up? Can, can we let this person out?" That's what I don't want to happen. That's the type of thing that'll doom this process. And that's the reason other areas and other jurisdictions, other counties are not able to implement it because of that type of thinking. So that's what I want to avoid. We know that any individual judge can fill up the jail if he wants to fill up the jail. Once that happens, and I think the judges have accepted and tried to work within those numbers reasonably, because Judge Bulis was here and he was tasked with, you know, having a jail that had a six-year wait list to serve a sentence. We don't want to get back to that. And we certainly don't want to start spending 1.3 million dollars every year to, to house our people in Medina County and, and other areas.
And I want to, and I want to apologize, you know, this, this came to us and I didn't look at it real close again. When we had our first meeting, I had to table it because otherwise, then this is a subject that needed to come, I think, first with the correction plan board, and from there then to the submitted discussion with all of the judges. So we gave it off on the wrong foot that way, so we put a, a new offer or a policy.
Oh, no, no problem. I don't think, yeah.
And John, you haven't had a chance to say it, but I know that you're, you know, you have a strong opinion on this subject, so we have a meeting today, so definitely put it here for the, for the Canton Municipal Court judges.
I think it's the wrong thing to do. For many reasons. I think it's a step forward.
I mean, can you just talk a little about it, just as a little air for movement?
No. What I said is, I think it's the wrong thing to do for some jail beds to some county. You know, we talk, we talk about the process that's moving so well. I, you know, I, I would wish you said about five, six warrants on a case you go back 10 years, you're not going to find warrants on three, three tops on any of my cases. So it just adds wrong. Secondly, I see a step backwards toward what we went through in the 90s, early 90s, if we start doing this. Right now, my compliance rate with community services is over 90%. My compliance rate with council is in the mid-80s. There was a day when I woke up one morning, you were the prosecutor, you were the law director, and I was the new judge, and there was a picture of the Canton Municipal Court as a truthless lion in the corporate prostitute room. It's one of the worst mornings I ever had. The public, my public that comes through here knows if they violate or over, we're going to jail, because there's space for us. And I make sure, when I open up court one morning, that people know. This first case here did not do this community service, it was picked up on the law. The sheriff, I told people, we have to pick them up once for me. There's no five warrants to come with the case. I can see this is stepping along the record. And I ask all of you personally not to go there.
And again, just to clarify, at least from my perspective, I think that we're saying the same thing. I would love to see the limit to be 501. I would like to see the, I want to see the use number be 501. But the extent that there is excess capacity, the question then becomes whether it is a good business decision to generate more funding, the general fund, that you can do a lot of good with by selling excess capacity beds, as long as that capacity is always available to you at every moment of the day, you know, to go back up to 501.
I just tell you this, though. Your speedometer goes to 120. You're not going to run at 120 all the time. So in response to your comment, we should be at 501, I don't know that that's a good model. We certainly need to be prepared to go to 501. But what happens when we in law enforcement do a better job and have 75 less felony commitments in a six-month period? Shouldn't that be part of what we're looking at here? I mean, to me, as a sheriff, it doesn't...
I think there's an unlimited capacity. People could probably, even be in jail or municipal court would probably tell you that you can limit, if you can eliminate 75, 75, then it's probably...
That's really not the decision of the sheriff, that's the decision of the court. And we respect that. And the courts, as I said before, the courts have been great. The only time since I've been here that we've asked people to be released are for medical reasons. If it's going to cost for county, it's served a lot of money for medical reasons. Other than when we first, when I first come into office, we were at 350 beds. And that was something that was there when I got there. But since we've been up to the 501, we had one little glitch, we didn't take a delivery on beds and, or masks, rather, for the beds, and we were down one week. a delivery on beds and, or masks, rather, for the beds, and we were down one week, one, actually, two days. Uh, besides that, the only time we asked anybody to be released is for medical reasons.
You know, it, it's odd, because if you go anywhere else, and I hate to keep bringing this up, but to get a judge or, or the whole system to look at the process in the, in the context of jail bed days, and then what a jail bed day costs, they don't do that anywhere else. And we do that here, and I think it's admirable that we do that, because we're look, we look at, at, um, what, what the effect, um, the process that we do every day has financially on the, the entire system and on the county. And I think it's, it's a good thing that, I mean, you're looking at, at, at it from a funding standpoint, from what does this do? We've asked the people of Star County for, for money.
Right.
Um, and, and you want to show them, you know, what you're doing with their money. Uh, if we come to a point where, um, the jail is, has empty beds, should we or don't we owe it to them if we can, as opposed to letting that jail bed sit empty? If they can generate revenue from that and reduce their obligation? Um, I mean, is that, is that some, not something we should be doing?
I'm not sure that we should. I mean, I'm not here criticizing anybody. This county is in the best shape it's ever been. Sheriff, I think you've done outstanding, John Phil, what I've said several times, is me, what you've done is top notch. The, the problem is, number one, we all have a different perspective.
Exactly. And that's good, that's what we're here talking about.
Yeah, it is, okay? And I'm looking at it from a judge's perspective. And again, I'm hearing it from all the other judges, I'm the spokesperson today, okay? We've been operating of the mindset that there's not enough beds to let them out. When Karen comes and sees me, you know, I'm in the middle of a draw, or I'm in, I'm just like, okay, what do we need to do when we let them out? Now that we're aware that there's beds available, I mean, I'll look everyone here in the eye and tell you, I'm going to start using them a lot more.
That's fine.
And I think all the judges are going to start using them a lot more. And I think that at least, I know one common police, uh, or I'm sorry, municipal court judge has said, he's going to start using his increase. Now, I think you're going to start seeing the beds filled up. Now, if there's empty beds, should they be sold? That's the commissioner's decision.
Actually, it's the sheriff's decision. The commissioner signed the, the contract, but.
Whoever it is, I'm not here to argue whose final decision it is, because that's the person who then has to answer to the public. But from my standpoint, I get tired of, I'm letting people out because we need to let people out, and then I read the paper, they committed to crime, so my whole attitude is changing now because I know that there's beds being filled.
Well, this, this same, this same process, when we've tried to sell this to the court, all the judges in the county in the room, they had the opposite point of view. Not my problem, why do I have to? And, and I think they bought into it simply to, to make the work. I, I, um, you know, and you're right, everyone's looking at this from a different perspective. In our office, we, we try to make everything flow. We keep a, we keep a constant flow. We look at jail bed days, we look at categories, we try to, uh, determine why a certain category is, is filling up and, and implement things to, to make it flow. So you're right, you're correct. I, I think what the sheriff's assurance was that if you put somebody in there, they're staying in. If you choose to, you know, use more jail beds, you know, we'll accommodate.
I just, I just wanted you to, what I go off of is that top line. That's, you know, unsentenced felonies. So right now, I'm two over. Not that I worried about my two over today.
But we're not kicking those out.
I know, no, no, I know. But that's the number, that's the number that I follow and I watch. So if I'm fifteen, seventeen over, then I start looking at the people that, why am I this over? Because we, uh, we usually stay within that means. All the other numbers, they're not me, I mean, they're not me. So that's why when I come to, and I come to based off, uh, you know, basically what Phil said, the criteria that they met, they need, that they're, basically are a good candidate to be released.
How are we going to? And again, we rely on sales tax money, probably for fifteen percent of our budget, but we start selling beds to Summit County? Whether it's a good idea or bad idea, again, whoever's decision makes that, how do we now then say to the public, we need money for the sales tax?
Isn't the sales tax based on need? I mean, uh.
Or is it based just on jail beds?
No, no, but if, 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 um, our processes that we've implemented reduced the number of jail beds used, the number of times somebody sits in jail, because there are instances where, uh, there's a physical process that happens when, when you process a case. Simply when you sign that entry, then other people take over. Uh, the prosecutor's office, for instance, uh, prepares that entry. We looked at what is in, what does preparing that entry entail? What, what happens? Why does it take fourteen to twenty-one days after you say guilty to get that guy into the institution? We went back and looked at that and we reduced that number. Okay, when you take that for every single entry signed by every single judge for a whole year, that reduces a lot of jail bed days. It went from fourteen to two. Multiply that by everyone else. So, um, if you needed a sales tax for, uh, for that, I mean, to implement that, I mean, doesn't that adjust accordingly?
I don't know, we do need the sales tax. You know, again, we've all talked about it, it's a perspective. Our budget pays for some of our probation and, and things of that nature from these, from these funds. If the sales tax doesn't pass, as Judge Bulis said, we, we may be taking a step backwards. And public perception is important, and if they hear, oh, we're selling beds to Summit County, why do I want this sales tax to be increased? And that's a view of.
And what they say to you, if they're going to say, why are there fifty excess capacity beds?
Yeah, I see.
Why don't you have fifty people in jail? Why don't you put fifty more in jail?
We, we will.
Okay, I know, but I say that, that's the.
Because basically, the conversation we're having is, we're just going to fill the beds to fill the beds.
Well, no, but it's, it may do that.
Well, I mean, if you think about it from the standpoint of everything that's been said here this morning, is basically, we could use the beds, we're going to use the beds. Because my argument is from a taxpayer standpoint, and I worked just as hard as anybody to pass the sales tax, and Commissioner Burney can say that. And if you look at it from that, this taxpayer standpoint, is we're being efficient, we're doing exactly what we said we do, we have a chance to return money, or we can leave the beds empty, and we said that, we did, and then just waste them.
No, no one's filling beds to fill beds. That, that's irritating to me. What we've done, we've all worked within the system as much as we can. But if I'm letting people out because I'm trying to help out the system and get along, and now I know I can keep these people in, especially people now that come in and they're on heroin, I'd rather have them in the jail than what I've been doing before. So no one's filling up beds to fill up beds, but I bet you Judge Bulis could fill up twenty-five beds of just suspended licenses every arraignment morning. So if you really think you want to do this plan, I would tell you, sit down with all the judges, listen to all their ideas, listen to all their concerns, uh, before you make this decision.
We've already decided that, that's why we're here today, that's why we have this person playing board, and we'll take it back in the morning, and, uh, let's have some judges meet.
I, I guess, Judge, when someone comes to you with a, with a case, and they say this is so-and-so, it's, it's because they fit the mold that we created to keep this thing working. Now, you, you may look at it as, oh, okay, why do I have to let this person out if, if there's an empty jail bed? Well, there's an empty jail bed because you've let that person, because that, we can now, if, if you so choose, we can change that criteria, we can make it more stringent, we can, we can make it so that it's, you know, uh, more difficult for them to get out. But in order for that to happen, the mechanism has to change. They're bringing that to you because the, the, what we've decided to make them eligible, they fill. Now, there are instances where the jail may be a capacity and they have to come, and this person has three days left, can we let him out? Three days early in order to make a jail bed available. But that hasn't happened for quite a while. So, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. Um, so we, we could actually at twenty-five, we can increase it to thirty, let's say, if, if that's what we want to do. That's, that's not a problem. So I, I guess in retrospect, should we have, or should, we have discussed this at the, in detail that we're doing now at, at an executive committee of the correction plan board, most definitely, that, that could have been handled a little bit better. But, um, I, I just see it as a tool. I see it as something that the sheriff can use if it's empty. So, um.
What's the maximum amount of beds we're even talking about in the contract? Is that the, the maximum amount of beds we're looking at contract? Is that number out there?
Uh, I think it was written in the contract, up to twenty beds.
Up to forty?
But, uh, the contract was pretty clear that, that the needs of the county, the needs of the county was primary concern. The other thing is, I think there was, there's been, from what you're saying, Judge, and I know you're giving a lot of feedback to the other judges, which is great, you can share that with us. There appears to have been a disconnect with the judges in the opening of the five hundred and one beds, which is disappointing, because this is available to everybody, and we announced it at the community correction board meeting. Now, I don't know that there was a total disconnect, or if it's from over time, all the judges were the mindset, we need to keep people out, which is understandable. But I can tell you, right after we opened the beds up last year in July to five hundred and one, we immediately spiked to over five hundred. I think we're at five hundred and eighteen at one time, okay? We weren't pushing anybody out, we were managing that number. So I think the judges did know, but got back into the mindset that we need to preserve beds. And so I think it is important that we get the message to the judges for them to use the beds, and if we want to, this is what we, this is why we have a sales tax, this is part of why we have a sales tax, this is why we are at the capacity we're at, so that you can use the judge, judges can use the beds, and we can affect our criminal justice system appropriately.
The other thing I want to say to you, Judge, is I don't really think that we need to adjust the amount of beds anybody has, simply because those only come into effect, like the numbers that we lay out, and they're all based on research, is when we hit that five oh one. Because right now, I can tell you on a daily basis, and there's two municipal courts that average ten beds over what they're allotted, and, and nobody ever goes to them and says, Judge, let these people out, because there's no reason to. Because my concern is if all of a sudden we expand out certain categories, then when it comes back down to it, then we're going to have to adjust those numbers from somewhere else, because we have them broke down in a way. And you can see the felony beds, uh, county police board beds, they're at, they're over like one ninety-two, all right? Now, if we got to capacity, I have to take those extra beds from the quarter, from another category. So when then we got to five oh one, where would we start pulling? Would we start pulling from the evening? It's just how that, that flows. Because right now, those numbers, like I said, they're no, they're not finite, finite, it's not like, all right, you know, Judge X guy is over by ten people, he knows to let ten people out. That's not the case. Those only come into account when we meet, we meet maximum capacity issues to five oh one.
To me, I think this may demonstrate that the system is working pretty well, actually.
There you go.
The, the discussion was to sell excess capacity at ten, twenty beds if we were that.
And also understand the concern, we don't want it to stop.
We want you to, to, really, we want you to put people in jail though, because that is obviously the purpose of our jail. But just explaining, why do we have such a, I mean, I guess the largest gap, when I see the fifty gap between capacity and use is in municipal court.
Right.
Why as of today is there that large gap in that area, supposed to be the mother area? And I'm sure that fluctuates from.
It fluctuates daily, and, and it does, it fluctuates daily. And again, one of the big reasons is, for example, lines, it gets a, a large amount of beds, they just don't have the volume to fill. But we also give the judge the, the ability to fill a bed if he needs some, but they're, they're, it's, it's greatly reduced. Um, you know, it could be a number of reasons, and a lot of it comes down to the arrangement of arraignment dates. Um, you know, it's just, it fluctuates so much.
We, we get to where we can actually tell, I mean, uh, there was a certain combination of, of, of a common police court judge and a municipal court judge, and if, if they were on arrangements together, it would, it would fill up. I mean, you, you become accustomed to knowing, uh, you know, what, what the trends are. Although you're right, that the category is, is in municipal court now that's, that's largely, uh, causing the, uh, the reduction.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I'll just give you a report when you hear it. The, the categories usually fluctuate under municipal court beds, yes, there's one that usually fluctuates under, simply because of the amount of beds we give them, the volume that comes in based on the court. Uh, the one that is usually always over is sentenced found, and the reason that sentenced found is it's only six over today, that one usually gets up the most, simply because with the judges tackling the heroin epidemic and dealing with a lot of drug cases, um, more people are being referred to the S R C C C, and they only have so many beds open. So we see that category, you know, if they don't have a bed, then they're out in the jail, and they fall into that category. And that seems to be one of the larger ones a lot of time, Karen, you can vouch for that. Um, those are, you know, and then the other ones are pretty much, they fluctuate, they never usually hit their capacity, like probation, uh, adult parole, ultra or thousand year stations, those usually stay pretty, pretty constant. I mean, they usually really don't. And then the, in lieu of bond disummers, that's another one. It'll go up, especially early in the week, because we're working on arraignments, and then by the end of the week, that number gets really down, so it's just a little.
And, uh, to me, when we have these meetings, by the way, which we probably have more often, it just demonstrates that we have extraordinary control over our system. We want to compliment, thank you guys, we compliment the judges for their cooperation and, uh, we just need to have more conversations.
And you can drill down, actually, to each category and actually go to the case itself from this, I mean, which courts send, and send them there, uh, they can sort them by, inmate by duration of sentence. So they use it, each bail, uh, Judge Bulis's bail, it does this every day. So there's someone in each clerk's office, pre-trial release, and then someone in which court, county police court, it's their assignment, their criminal assignment, commissioner, it's usually a bail over business, but, so, so it's very hands-on process.
All right, I just hope that I don't have to hear, uh, Judge Bulis's arraignment report today, because I know where I'm going. And Frank, Judge Frank, he's been a shame, name, name and title for that shirt today.
Is there anything I can ever do to make you happy?
No, we will, and we are open to continue, this is not on the table anymore, other than for our conversations with Wisconsin, there was nothing pending before the commissioners. So if you'd like to schedule a large meeting, they could have the purchase plan board, have us visit the, you know, the judges, uh, Judge John, we can come over to municipal court, and the sheriff, and myself, um, if you'd like, come over to the county police court and, and kick around a bit. And we, what you're saying, we, we want you to use the beds, the question is, if we're not using the best capacity, can we, you know, with the government and good, good sense, like they're generating money?
Right.
We want you to use the beds.
Right. If, um.
Without screwing up your system?
Uh, no, no, it, it won't screw it up. It, the system works, you, as you said, it works very well. Um, and, uh. Yes, I'm just.
Everybody has a different perspective on it, everybody respects everybody's ideas and their business, and in the end, I'm not sure who makes the ultimate decision between these two, but you'll make it.
Well, as, as the commissioner said, there's nothing for the clinician or the law, so it's, it's actually just discussion amongst the process.
Would you like a second? Or would you like to schedule something?
Sure.
Schedule, I got to walk them over to our body, and you could also, but again, again, I, I think the idea always was, and I'm a recipient of the idea, you know, the sheriff and the commissioner, I think the idea always was, the capacity level that we're talking about was, you know, the, sort of, ten or twenty, not, not putting that where you sell fifty beds on any given day, but when you're in capacity, you know, four ninety or something, and, uh, there's space of that, that would be, do something to add a.
I, I think the combination of, of this process, reduce felonies, um, I, I think it will correct itself over time. Uh, but only time will tell. But, uh, perhaps the next step is, Judge, if you're hearing from, from the court, you've always, uh, after convening one of these meetings, uh, met with, with the judges. I mean, we'd be happy to.
I think we have to set up a meeting with all the common police judges, all the prosecutors, or all the, um, municipal judges, family court judges, probably, just get everybody all together, then everybody feels that they're a part of the process, everybody feels that they've got to express their views, and then I don't have to be the, the whipping boy that goes over.
I think, I think that's a very good next step.
And, uh, and, uh, and then they can make the appropriate choice. I mean, I, if, if, once everybody's viewpoint gets hurt, I think everybody feels better with the decision, it's always been my experience.
I agree.
Except with my dad, he got to lead the judge, jury, and the post office.
And again, we're, we're more than happy to split up meetings, and it's fifty different audiences, and, and, and everybody, everybody.
You'll buy the dollars.
Pardon?
You'll buy the dollars.
All right.
Thank you.